Mr. Attorney, I thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Mexico Beach Artificial Reef Association has asked the County Commission again for authorization for the chairman to sign the Section Four for zoning to be completed by the governing event location. Each year they have their kingfish tournament in your Beacon Hill Veterans Memorial Park, and have again asked for the commission's approval to have the chairman sign off on a DBPR, Division of Alcohol Beverages and Tobacco, application for the one-day permit of special sales license when they have their kingfish tournament out in your park in August. And they've submitted that application asking for the chairman's authorization to sign, and so we'd ask for an authorizing vote for that.
All right, floor is open.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve that. I do believe all of these things should be on the agenda, but this is something we need to do, and I will make the motion to approve that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner McLemore. All right, any further board discussion? This is a one-day event or a two-day? How many days?
The fishing event is three, but I believe the permit is for one day, Mr. Chairman.
One-day permit, okay. If anyone in the audience, four could vote, all right? Any opposition? Motion passed five and oh. That is. Attorney, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item, I have an eighty-six-page decision from the United States District Court with regards to the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners and School Board. Judge Walker's rendered a decision, and going through the decision, just to, I'd be happy to provide each of you commissioners a copy if you wish to have one. We can also get one probably on the county website as a PDF if anybody wishes to, and I think you can probably find it on the Internet. In a nutshell, Judge Walker's come back and found that what they've characterized it as prison gerrymandering, and has cited several counties throughout Florida, but in essence has, an order on the summary judgment motion, has found that the prisoners, the state inmates in Jefferson County are not to be counted. They're part of the census figures from 2010, but they're not to be counted as part of the redistricting process. I haven't spoken to Mr. Spellman since receiving the decision last evening. I anticipate speaking with him and getting further comment from him on its impact to Gulf County. But as we wait his comments to the commission and to the public, as you all recall, Gulf County has not included their inmates as, has not several, I believe eight other small rural counties in Florida. The decision not to incorporate the state inmates for fear that it would skew the redistricting process, so Gulf County, along with several other counties, have not, and the federal court has now upheld that in that decision right here. The order of the court to Jefferson County was to redistrict immediately, and if they do not, then the federal court will step back in and provide them redrawn lines. But as indicated, I'll provide more information from Mr. Spellman on the impacts, but I just wanted to notify the commission that that decision has been rendered, and it's available if anybody would like a copy of it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
What you're saying is a federal judge overruled the attorney general of the state of Florida. Opinion?
Yes, sir, there's attorney general opinion citing state law, saying that they were to be incorporated in the census figures and redistricting, and Jefferson County took that and incorporated that in their redistricting in 2015. And so as we move into an even year, an election year, the federal court has now come back and said that the state law, and it's not so much that the inmates do not count in terms of their vote, the judge's analysis indicated that they don't have any impact. So, a vote of an inmate, if it were to be counted in your redistricting, your votes on this board in essence don't affect state inmates. The legislature would, but on a local level, an inmate to have, receive a qualified vote, even though they're prohibited by state law to vote, they would not receive any impact from your decisions on a local level. And so Judge Walker based most of his decision on the fact that county commissions can't impact state inmates, and therefore, under equal protection clause, they're not entitled to that in the redistricting. So moving forward, Gulf County in essence would be working with about thirteen thousand voters versus the fifteen thousand seven hundred with the inmates included.
Gulf County got it right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Attorney?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I would just like to request, Jeremy, if you would please email me a copy of that. Thank you.
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you, dear. Larry?
Nothing right now.
And I know you have something coming up later. Arthur?
Just wanted to bring the road closure for C-30. It's coming next week. They plan on working on it between Monday and Friday. Be closed intermittently between Raw Bar and Franklin County line. They've got signs up now. When the work is started, from what I understand, they're going to draw the signs in closer to the worksite. So, just another reiteration, C-30 between the Raw Bar and Franklin County line next week is going to be kind of sketchy.
Anyone in the audience that lives between, we'll say east of the Raw Bar and the Franklin County line, anyone here watching on television, you may have possibly a one-day delay or a small interruption, but they're going to try to do this in a hurry. They have to do it before they can pave the highway. It's covered, so they have to cut the road in, but they will get it passed by hopefully same day. All right, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This will help out. In the past, I've had problems with the road, smaller covers, have a lot of rain. It actually serves like a dam. It would hold the water up. Matter of fact, I got a call two weeks ago, oh, I got a stop in the, I told me, so this is a must for those people in that area, and Mark, I appreciate you working with those people. That means a lot when, you know, somebody has a problem and right on it, it means a lot also to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Arthur, you pretty much hit. All right. Mr. Paul, good to see you this morning.
Thank you.
Whitfield?
I received a call from Bay Medical Center last Friday, and they requesting that Gulf County EMS host a class over here in Gulf County. It's a PHTLS.
Whatever that means.
Pre-hospital trauma alert.
There you go.
Bay Medical Center is a regional trauma center for this area. This, this class is a two-day class, and we're requesting that we use the Honeyville Community Center on the, on June the eighth and ninth. The FEs are available dates and waiver the fee for, for the use. This is going to be invitational to all the local counties, Calhoun County, Liberty County, Franklin County, Bay County. So, we're going to have about thirty, thirty-five people at this class. Bay Medical Center is funding all the food for it, the instructors, the books, so there's no cost to the county.
So, as a host county, you're just simply asking that we can waive?
Right.
We can hold it, and then, and that's great, they come here and hold it.
Yeah, and we're centrally located for everybody to come to us.
I've motioned for it, but I want to, I got, I have a question or two. All right.
A second?
All right, let's get to second now, let's come back to your question. The only issue that I have that we need to really put our heads together on, because this has happened several times before, is the cleanup deal.
Yeah.
Now, you make crews get caught up with this, we have it rented like the next day or whatever, it's just a big issue.
Right.
So, or, we need to be clear.
Yeah.
We're waiving the fee, or you're going to clean it up?
Yes.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. We'll leave it like we found it.
All I need to know. All right, we have a motion by McLemore, second by Commissioner Bryan, to waive the fee for this. It's a training event?
Yes.
Or an educational event for the Honeyville?
It's actually a training event, you get a certification out of it.
Oh, okay, so it'll...
It's a national certification.
It's great, we're having it here in Gulf County. Normally, they don't want to drag you to Bay County on everything, so that's good, Houston. Thank you for what...
We'll do it, partner.
Yeah, plenty of room, plenty of... All right, any other questions on this? Anyone in the audience? I have a motion, or, already got the motion, any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and oh. Houston, is that it for you, sir?
That's all.
All right. Jenkins?
No, sir.
Oh, come on now, you gotta have something. Okay. All right, all right. Mr. Lanier, we'll drop home, visit you today.
Don't have anything?
Nothing.
Yes, sir.
Rhonda?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board. I know that you didn't get the notice ahead of time, but thank you very much for passing the risk assessment policy. It's one of the issues that we're having to answer with questions with the federal auditors coming in from the SORAC, and I appreciate your consideration in passing that.
Thank you, Rhonda. Ms. Roberts? You're good. Jeff, give me some good news.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
There you go, that's what I wanted. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that completes item four, item three. We're going to move into item four, which is board business. Turn this page over here, I'm already full. This time, we will address board business. Commissioner Quinn, would you like to take the lead on this? Do you have anything before the board this morning?
Mr. Chairman, ladies first, so I'll let Ms. Joanna go first.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Bryan? Okay, all right, there you go, thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I guess we'll address page eighteen first.
All right, okay, let me get you, let's see. This time, ladies and gentlemen, we will set an agenda, we're going to go to page eighteen. Okay? Commissioner, you have the floor.
Okay, the minutes on page eighteen are turning the garbage, solid waste, waste pro discussion. It's the...
The special meeting of March tenth. Okay, on page eighteen, all right.
It, this is just a minor thing, it says that the chairman called for public comment, and I don't recall there being any public comment called for. I'm not saying that it required public comment. We did not vote on anything at that time, it was just discussion, but I, I did not recall any public comment, so we may need to check that to make sure that the minutes are correct. The second issue in the minutes is that it was not mentioned that Mr. McDaniel, that you had the sheriff remove the commander of the VFW from the meeting, Mr. Dan McDonough, and I think the minutes need to reflect that. It was a, an important part of the meeting. I personally was shocked and appalled by your behavior, and I found it despicable. It's frightening to think that someone can make one statement and be removed from a meeting, and it was, to see someone who has served our country here attending our meeting, who made one statement, and to have you, Mr. McDaniel, remove him from the meeting by the sheriff, it was heartbreaking. I, I am going to apologize publicly to Mr. McDonough, and say that I'm extremely sorry for the way that our, our chairman of this board treated you, and that you felt that you had to leave. I don't blame you for leaving. If the sheriff was coming towards me, I'd probably be leaving too. So, I, I find this very, a very serious issue, and I think that the minutes need to reflect that.
Well, thank you for this, and then I'll follow. Yes, I'd like to make a comment on that. You have a... About all? Okay. You know, I'm sorry it happened also, but here's the issue. The chairman has a responsibility to keep this meeting in order. That is his duty. We have somebody in the audience that not only one time did he make a comment or whatever, it was two or three times that that happened. But let's, let's get it straight, you know, but I'm on the chairman's side with this. He's in full control of this meeting, and he has to take control whenever proper. So, you know, you can sit there, and you can express your opinion, that's fine, but I express mine, and the chairman did his job. Thank you, sir.
And I just...
No, you had an opportunity.
Well, I, when you're done, I would like to respond.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, record, all of you came this morning. Out on the front door, there's some lettering there. Gulf County is one of the few counties that we go by the honor system. You didn't have to walk through a metal detector there this morning. You didn't, you came in. We still show respect and hope people have honor. It is my responsibility that I, myself, and the sheriff over here, after we have a meeting, we're relieved, we're relieved. We have a speaking policy, as I plainly stated a few members ago. Anyone has any business before the board, be recognized, come up, and let us know what you want to. Everybody is recognized. We're one of the few counties that asks you before we vote, is there anyone in the audience have any comments before we go to a vote? But it is my responsibility, elected by majority of this board, to run this meeting. This meeting is no different. If you go over in Judge McFarland's court and you jump up or something, you won't tolerate it. Now, Commissioner Bryan, this is a person, I think this was more or less at me. I didn't know that, I asked the gentleman, Mr. Lanier, maybe we need to just put it up here. What do you say?
Yes, sir.
What do you say? What do you say? A veteran, let me say this, I see Mr. Grady back here, he served at the same in the Army, am I correct, Mr. Grady? I served in the United States Army, and I assure you, he said he held a rank of colonel. When he walked in the room, there wasn't a bunch of privates or sergeants jumping up and making comments. They sat until they were recognized, and I said the same thing, check the meeting. Sir, take your seat, you'll be recognized, you'll be given your time, be given your time. Now, it was already a hostile environment, and I can't risk, I don't know, some of you in there, hope you don't, but we had a case in Bay County, we had a case right over here, somebody jumped up with a pistol, what if it shot somebody here? And whose fault is it? I have to, I can't help how it feels, I have to control this meeting. People will be, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the people out here in the audience, and I've said this before, we have a great audience. People come in, they understand, but you've got to follow the policy, you've got to follow the rules. And when you, you out there, my hands are tied. I didn't know this gentleman, it didn't matter, man, out of the line as far as our speaking policy, make you recognize and you talk. So, I stand by what I did, and if we have to do it again, we'll do it again, but every one of your safety rests on my shoulders, this man right over here. Now...
And, and I want to respond to that, Mr. McDaniel.
Well, I'm sure you do, go ahead.
Well, and, and it's my, it's my right to respond to that, and I appreciate what Commissioner McLemore has said, and I appreciate him factoring in, and, and I can completely understand his position. Wasn't here at this meeting, but when it happened, it was, it was seconds, it wasn't disruptive, you didn't give any kind of a warning, you know, thank, you know, thank you, sir, if, if you want to speak, you could speak, there was no kind of warning. You went right to sheriff, remove this man, you went right to it. You know, we're all people here. This is not a court of law. This is not a court of law. This is not a branch of the military. This is a county commission meeting. We are doing the business of the people. We are doing the business of the people out there beyond that little gate, and out there in, in the world of the television where they're watching us. We are doing their work. You can't sit up here like the dictator of North Korea and, and just rain down on people. And I'm, I'm going to finish, just because you don't like what I say, doesn't mean you can gavel me down. And it's people like Mr. Dan McDonough that have risked their lives so that these people can come and participate in their government.
Very in recess. Get some composure. All right.
Now, you know, I'm perfectly composed, but I have an opinion, and the people in this community have an opinion, and they have contacted me since that meeting, and they don't care for the way that you are treating the commander of the VFW.
Sheriff, you may have to escort her out.
I mean, is this really, this is supposed to be a government for the people of the people?
Going to address over to our county attorney. Black, would you please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, during the recess, you'd requested that I provide the board and the public to recite your Gulf County Board of Rules of Procedure and Policy adopted in July of 2015. You asked that I provide the commission's Section Ten and Section Eleven. Section Ten reads, which is your policy that was adopted last year, comments and citizens' input addressing the commission. Section A is no person attending a board meeting shall harass, annoy, or otherwise disturb any person in the room. It also cross-references your public speaking ordinance, Mr. Chairman, that you referenced. B is all persons attending board meetings shall remove hats in board meeting, maintain civility, decorum, and respect for the official public meeting and business conducted. And Section Ten C is no person shall disrupt or speak out loud during a board meeting, and only the chairman will properly identify the order, an individual person recognized only to speak. Section Eleven, Mr. Chairman, you asked me to read, which is board decorum. To ensure every member has a fair opportunity to participate in meetings that are conducted in orderly fashion, the following procedures shall be in effect. The confinement of remarks and discussions made by board members shall be confined to the motion or the matter immediately before the body. B, personal attacks are prohibited. In discussion, a member may condemn the nature or likely consequences of the proposed measure in strong terms, but must avoid personalities, and under no circumstances may he or she attack or question the motives of another member. The issue and not a person shall be intent under discussion. C, the breach of decorum. The chair had, shall immediately call out of order any remarks outside the issue being addressed. Another member may call to the attention of the chairman and the members, and the other members this breach of procedure, and the member shall immediately cease the breach of decorum and continue with his or her remarks confined to the issue. Comments addressed to the chair. All discussion shall be made through the chairman, no member may, and one member may not interrogate another member or a person speaking from the public, except through the chairman. E, order of discussion. After a member has spoken or asked questions on a matter before the board, other members shall be given the opportunity to speak. If no other member wishes to speak to the issue, the member may continue to the issue. Eleven F, disruptiveness. During discussion or voting, a member shall not disturb the other members in any way that may be considered disruptive to the proceedings or hamper the transaction or business. Eleven G, rulings from the chair. The chairman may rule as out of order any action deemed inappropriate or dilatory or may interrupt a speaker for reasons he or she deems necessary. H, members are prohibited from using text messaging and instant messaging during public hearings or meetings. I, refusals to comply. If a member of the board refuses to comply with these rules, the following procedure shall be used. The member shall be called to order by the chairman or by a majority vote of the members present. If a member refuses during the meeting to abide by the rules, the members present by majority vote may censure the member and have it entered into the official minutes of the meeting, and thereafter, the chair shall take those procedural steps deemed necessary to restore and maintain order and ability to conduct county business. This is Sections Ten and Eleven, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, that's what we have to apply and abide by too. Those. Thank you. That's majority vote, abide by, apply to. Now, addressing age eighteen, the consent agenda, and the word, the first order was that there was no public comment. I don't know, I'll have to go back there and check. It was in concerning waste, pro, and if I, if I recall, it was a pretty lengthy discussion in there, or if we voted, if it was a vote, I don't see a vote here on that. And the second issue, the one that now is the Beacon Hill Veterans Memorial Guarding. Now, Bryan, you have the floor for board discussion.
And I'll clarify, I, I do not believe we took a vote, so I, I do not think that you were required to go for public comment, but I don't think we did, so I just think the minutes need to be corrected.
All right, so noted.
And on the second issue, it was still in the waste pro discussion, we had not moved into the Beacon Hill Veterans Memorial Park discussion yet, and I just think that the minutes need to reflect that Mr. McDonough was removed by your order to the sheriff. So, if I need to put that in the form of a motion to correct the minutes as the meeting took place, then I will make that in a motion.
Now, that's your opinion there. Want to, on the Beacon Hill Veterans Memorial Park...
It was before that. It was still in the, it was still in the waste pro discussion. Everything that, those two issues were all in the waste pro discussion.
You want to implement into the minutes? You don't think they're in the minutes? Ms. Roberts, you're the official minute keeper, or you keep our minutes?
Or you're aware of what the commissioner's talking about here?
And you would need to verify that we didn't go to the public, I, but I don't think we did, and it's just an, an issue of just, you know, accuracy.
I will certainly go back and, and listen to the minutes. I know that I pay really close attention every time you ask for public comment, regardless of reservation or not, but I will definitely go back and be there again.
And then the issue with the removal, we, you do a great job of noting when a commissioner leaves the room or enters the room, and I, I think that it is an important part of the minutes to reflect that somebody was removed by order of the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I can offer a suggestion, in the past, historically, when you have run into an issue of question on minutes as a board, and I know Ms. Roberts goes in and under Ms. Norris's direction, there are cursory overview of the events, and you actually have a recorded version of them. When the board has had a question in the past of what transcribed or what was stated, the board has motioned in the past that there just be an exact transcribed as best Ms. Roberts can detect from the discussion, so there is no interpretation, there is no question. I don't want to say it's practically impossible for Ms. Roberts to do that for every meeting, but in incidents where you have the discussion as to what was said or what was done, the board has taken action in the past where you just have an exact transcribed section from that action of the dialogue between the commissioners or the public. So, it's something that you've done as a precedent in the past if it's up for the board's To that point, I don't believe the gentleman was identified in the, and I'd have to go back and listen as well, but I don't believe the individual that you're speaking of was identified during the meeting. So, if the dialogue of removing someone from the room is the will of the board, what you've done in the past, you've actually put the exact words that were spoken by the commission in your minutes.
We can go back, and I think if we can go back and put the tape up there, show it just for the people and the ones on television, see the actions and...
And if indeed there was call for public comment, we'll revise Page 18?
Sure.
And then could the board vote to approve or not approve the removal of Mr. McDonough, and then we can move forward and revise his minutes?
Okay.
And next board meeting, we can bring those back and have them addressed again?
I'm fine with that. I'm perfectly fine.
And I will revise my motion accordingly.
Yes, we recognize the sheriff.
We want the record to be correct. I want to make sure we got everything here. Chairman did give the order for me to remove him. I merely stood up at that time. The gentleman removed himself. I don't want to back to the room. I broke him out or physically removed him from this building. He honored his request for him to leave. He was already standing up. I stood up at the time he gave the order, and he left the room.
I think.
There was no further comment. I just didn't want to reflect that I physically removed him or removed him.
And that is, I agree, that is a correct reflection.
All right.
So we'll revise Page 18 to reflect those actions?
Go back and research, look at the tape, research, and if they need correcting or they need to be edited in there, we'll do it.
And we'd like to include a motion that Commissioner O'Brien had as to the events that happened with Mr. McDonough, as stated by the sheriff. You want those actions in the board?
All I want is accurate minutes there. That's all I want. That's all the people, and that's what need to go by. Okay?
So you can go back and we need the minutes, include whether there was or was not request for public comment?
All right.
If it was not request for public comment, we'll remove that.
Right.
And then this board needs to vote as to whether we are going to include the exact events that happened with Mr. McDonough leaving the board meeting after the board.
Well, there ain't a motion to that.
I made the motion, right? The motion's on the floor.
Okay, it's been a little time. Do I get a second to her motion?
I got a question.
Okay.
How can you include someone in the minutes if they were never recognized? So, so, so Mr. McDonough was never recognized, and the chairman asked someone to, sheriff removed that gentleman. So now we want to go back and put Mr. McDonough was asked to, to be removed from aboard me. And so if he was never recognized, then we shouldn't put his name in the minutes, right? I mean, I'm just, because I, if we, if the chairman just stands up and says, sir, remove that, that young lady, so now we want to go back and we want to put that lady's name? We got to get her name, and we're going to put her in the minutes? I'm just, I'm just a question I'm asking.
Mr. Attorney?
My recommendation to the commissions to let the clerk's office go back, watch and listen to the tape, and as you've done in the past, you put in parentheses, and it's not an editorial, it's an observation in the minutes that you provide to the commission, come up with a revised minutes on Page 18 for the commission to consider at their next meeting, and if it more detailed or accurately reflects not only the discussion, but also the actions that were taken. If people came to the podium as you asked for and identify themselves, you put them in the record and their address. If there's action of the commission with regards to a disruption in the room, then the clerk's office can provide you all a summary as to what occurred, and you all can either accept it or reject it at the next meeting until you all comfortable with what those minutes reflect. In terms of names, if they're identified here, they generally put them in there. If there's anonymous individuals in the audience, then it will reflect it in parentheses as you've done in the past when you've had a comment or some disruption in your minutes. So I would recommend that you allow the clerk's office to go back, listen, provide you more details to the motion I believe Ms. Brian has made, and come back and offer it to you all at your next meeting. And if you're comfortable with it, you accept it. If you don't, you can go back or listen to it at your next meeting.
Good deal. All right. I can repeat again, do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Anything else on Page 18, Commissioner?
No, that's it for Page 18. So am I assume you're not, I know you had asked for the video to be put up on the screen. Are you not doing that?
Pulling that back now.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. You do need to vote on whether you accept this Page 18 as it stands in the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah.
So I need a motion for that in a second.
All right. We accept Page 18 as it stands, as it stands in consent. Actually, her motion died. Yeah. So it automatically goes back into the agenda.
But it wasn't accepted at the beginning.
And accepted at the beginning. Okay. All right. Need a motion for Page 18. I motion for Page 18 to go back into the agenda, settle this 35-minute circus again, and let's take care of business and move on. All right, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Horns. Any further board discussion? Want anyone in the audience? Not any opposition to the motion?
I oppose.
Motion passed forward. Thank you. Commissioner, you still have the floor.
Yeah, I just want to let the public know that the American Legion is having their annual fish fry on Friday at the Veterans Park in Beacon Hill Park, and it starts at 11:00, and it's a, it's a great event, so please come out and support our American Legion and get some great food out there. I also wanted to get an update on the situation with the burned-out trailer on Alabama from our, our attorney, and we, I believe that we need to move forward. We've been waiting on the bank to take action, and Mr. Novak, do you have any update on that?
Other than the nine contacts, dialogue, correspondence with them, I'd have nothing else to update you on.
It doesn't appear that they're going to act, and we've given them ample time. It's clearly a, a public hazard. The people that live around there have been dealing with this for a long time. It's, it's a shell of a burned-out trailer. There, there's vermin living in it, the kids play in it, and I think it's a danger. So I'm going to make the motion that we go ahead, and we don't have to clear the entire lot, but we need to go in there, we need to take it down as far as we need to, to make it safe, and so it doesn't smell, and it's not a nuisance any longer. That's my motion.
Motion on the floor. This is regular that we've been acting around with. Do I have a second? Commissioner's motion?
I have a second. I most something needs to be done, so.
Thank you. Any other? Let me have thing here. Ladies and gentlemen, I have two, and I thank Commissioner McLamore. Am I correct or did this one across? Have they already addressed? Okay, but as all of you may be aware, we've opposing the Five Points, and remember in our agreement, we have free dumping, so we won't be billed on this material that we will carry out to Waste Pro, run the transfer station. Am I correct there, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, you have about $60,000 in credits.
Right. Now, what we have to do is get, well, Mr. Cothran, we will go out, we will remove it, document the time and the amount of money that the county that you have in it, and then we will lean the property. So I have, I know two up in the district that I represent, it's got to be moved with Mr. Cothran. I know you can't move them all at one time, but maybe when you got an excavator. I know we're working in the, moving this massive amount of dirt from the north end of the county down to cover, but if you can put that on there, on your, and if you've got a, maybe a dump truck available or one of our small excavators, you address that if you could. All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Are there any other impediments, Mr. Novak, to us getting in there and getting this down? Is this something that we can get started on as soon as Public Works is able to get out there?
I can speak to, I spoke with Mr. Cothran just so he'd give Mr. Butler and I an indication of how many loads and how much time, and he's done that, and he's let us know. In terms of scheduling, I'll let Mr. Butler or Mr. Cothran let you know how quickly, but with regards to legalities and the impediments, no.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Butler or Mr. Cothran, do you want to comment on at least a general idea of when we think we could begin to take that down?
My first comment, we're working on the landfill, and that's the biggest public works project I've seen in 25 years, and I would say we probably don't need to stop the landfill project to do this project, but Mark can tell us better if there's going to be a crack in the landfill project, we'll get in and do it.
All right. Here got a vote to do, but come on, because I asked a question discussion. I know we do have a small dump. I don't know, you're responsible for that. That's what, we got you on the table.
We've got days and days and days of hauling left that our trucks need to bring the topsoil material from the 200-acre site down to Five Points.
Our trucks.
That's right. I mean, GAC's got their section in the contract, we're responsible for the topsoil. We have used some topsoil at Five Points. We knew that it was going to be questionable having enough, we're not going to have enough. So before we get behind, we're getting it from 200 acres down here, and it's every day, all day. Unless something catastrophic happens, we're doing it every day. Now, if, if what the board wants for us to stop and tear houses down, that's, I mean, we'll do whatever you want, but, but that is, from what I understand, top priority.
What about this small dump truck, maybe a front-end loader? Have you got all, all of our equipment tied up up there?
Well, the three dump trucks that we have, the big dump truck.
Yeah.
They're, they're all three hauling every day.
I know they are. I met two of them this morning as I was coming down.
One flatbed that's got some transmission problems in the shop, we have one small flatbed that we could use. I mean, you're, it has no tailgate, not much of one, it's not real safe haul, that kind of material up down the road.
All right, let me, let me go right here to this.
We also need to be recognized that we have roads in the county that's washed out, still washed out during the flood that we haven't had time to fix.
That's right.
I would suggest that the attorney keep hammering on this. Let's try to get some outside of distance on it. Bottom line, you don't have time. You don't have the equipment unless you just shut down and go do this.
It's got to be done.
I have one in my district, but it can wait, you know? So we have to put our priorities in order. We have roads that we can't get by that's washed out.
That's right.
And we're going to go, we're going to shut them down to go tear somebody's house down? That don't make sense to me.
Now, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Sure.
And it's not, it's not, it is not a house, it is a trailer. So if we could even get out there and take just some of it down, just to make it somewhat safe, and maybe we go back later and get additional if we need to, but it's a, it's a horrible shell of a trailer, and it, it's been there a very long time. This has been going on a long time, and the people have been suffering through it. There's a lot of odor coming out of it, there, there are a lot of animals living in it. It's, it's really disgusting. So if we could even just go and, and do at least a, a minor amount of work that would take it down to where it can open up and, and breathe a little bit, if you don't take all the base out, but you take that shell out. Mr. McDonough, you've been out there, you've seen it. I don't know how long it takes to take that down, but if you can assess it, and maybe we can do some work on it just to get it into a safe place, Mr. Novak can continue to push, but I don't think the bank is going to do anything. And I do think that you clearly have been on them, and they say they're going to do it, but they don't do it.
Just caution, one thing, and then we got to move. It, you're going to have to cut it in sections. In face, you can take some of this trailer and put it on a lowboy maybe, not tie, as a way to get not. A threat. Now, my two, the two in mind, they just going to have to wait.
Okay.
They're going to have to wait.
May I make a comment?
Sure, and then we got to move.
And I think this might work. Then Larry Baker right there with the, with the machine, let him tear it down, let him pile it up. We'll haul it off when we get available.
Now, that's what I was going to ask. If that's acceptable, we can drop an excavator off, tear the whole thing down, and have it ready to be hauled off.
All right. Yes, let's just show that we do.
That's the way to do it.
We're doing something, that's amazing. Okay. All right, good. All right, we got a motion on the floor for this, second by Commissioner Quinn. We want to, any other board discussion to go out? This is one project, District 3, this trailer. Anyone in the audience? We can move along. Opposition? Motion passed 5-0. Mr. Cothran, work it around, but don't hold us up up there no more than you can. All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner, you still have the floor.
Okay, I have, I have one more item, and it pertains to the special meeting of March 10th, and I, I want to make a statement about it. It appears that the primary purpose of that meeting was an ambush on me. It was 45 minutes of orchestrated and rehearsed attacks regarding the Waste Pro contract and the Howard Creek Men's Night, also known as Norton Night. Mr. Chairman, I, I know that you don't want this to be discussed, but I need to clear the record, and then I will move on. But I've gone back and I've, I've looked through the video of the last meeting, the special meeting, and I've also viewed the February 29th meeting, and during those 45 minutes, there were, were a number of inaccuracies and misrepresentations by Jeremy Novak and Michael Hammond, and it was clearly an attempt to smear me. And I'm not going to go through all of those items, but there were just a couple of glaring issues that I feel need to be addressed. The first item is the word analysis, and that term was used many times, at least six times, maybe more, by Jeremy, and both Jeremy and Michael referred to reports. Now, typically, you would receive a report on an issue. This happened to be the Waste Pro contract and mandatory garbage, and, and that report would be in writing, and you would have the basis for the position that your, your attorney or your assistant administrator, you'd have the basis for the positions that they are taking. But we've received nothing. The board has received nothing, and the public has received nothing to review. Now, I try to practice what I preach, and I, I detail emails to our county administrator, assistant administrator, our county attorney. You guys are probably lucky that I can't detail emails to you because of the sunshine law, or you would be suffering from my emails also. But I do detail things in writing in emails, and I have been told by our county attorney not to put things in writing because it becomes a public record. Now, I have said for the three and a half years that I've been on this board that we need to be working with our issues and, and our positions in writing. So that, that's the first issue we've received. Our attorney's gone through his analysis, our assistant county administrator has gone through his analysis, his report, but still nothing in writing, just a few notes, but no written analysis. The, the next item is that Jeremy Novak accused me of attacking him and his family, and I went back again and reviewed the tapes, and that is, that is completely false. I did not attack anyone, and we're, I want that clear for the public. I've not attacked anyone or their family. And Mr. Novak, you accused me of illegalities from what I said at the February 29th meeting. Illegalities indicates a criminal act, and I want you to tell me and the public what criminal act that you are accusing me of.
May I, may I interrupt, Mr. Chairman? I want a motion to move forward with this issue. Kill it once and for all. We discussed it a half a dozen times. We don't want to hear it again from our attorney, we don't want to hear it from you anymore. I motion on the.
Our attorney's gone through his analysis, our assistant county administrator has gone through his analysis, his report, but still nothing in writing, just a few notes, but no written analysis. The next item is that Jeremy Novak accused me of attacking him and his family, and I went back again and reviewed the tapes, and that is, that is completely false. I did not attack anyone. And we're, I, I want that clear for the public, I've not attacked anyone or their family. And, Mr. Novak, you accused me of illegalities from what I said at the February 29th meeting. Illegalities indicates a criminal act. And I want you to tell me and the public what criminal act that you are accusing me of.
May I, may I interrupt, Mr. Chairman? I want a motion to move forward with this issue. Kill it once and for all, we discussed it a half a dozen times, we don't want to hear it again from our attorney, we don't want to hear it from you anymore. I'm motioning on the floor, on the table right now, that we move on to the next issue.
I believe I, I have the floor, and...
I just interrupted you.
You're calling for a point?
I'm calling for a point.
This is a very serious accusation.
Hold, hold just a minute, he's called for a point. All discussions must stop on a point of order. Commissioner, state your point.
The point is, this is a beating a dead horse down further. We have heard it time and time and time again. We've heard the name-calling, the attacks on the attorneys, the attacks on the commissioners. I'm tired of it. We don't need to hear it any further. We need to move on, let's take care of business. It is a shame to sit here, I've been here almost 16 years. I can't even come down to a board meeting anymore and take care of business because of the circus, wherever it may be. We don't need that. We're here to take care of business, you know? And business is plain and simple. You discuss the issue, you vote on it, and you move on to the next issue. The man was right at the last special meeting.
Yes, he was.
When he stood up and said, "Move on to the next item." He was correct in that side of the story, but he was wrong when he stood up and yelled in the audience. But you, you have created this problem for the last three and a half years since you've been on this board.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, I've got a motion on, I've got a motion on the floor.
Is your motion on, is your motion to kill this debate?
Kill this debate and move on to the next issue. That is my motion. It's plain and simple. I don't want to hear it anymore. If it continues, I will get up and walk out and go north.
That's your motion. Do I have a second on the motion? Do I have a second, Commissioner? Motion?
I second with discussion.
All right. Commissioner Quinn, seconds with discussion.
I, I, I understand what Commissioner McLemore is saying. Again, I, I understand, I get tired of sometimes I get, you know, come in and, heck, I don't know what's going to happen. I don't know if we're going, I'm going to get beat up, I don't know if my character is going to be attacked. A lot of things been thrown around, you know, about, Commissioner Bryan called it Men's Night. I definitely want that Men's Night, but I was invited to Men's Night, and it, and it wasn't by anyone from Waste Pro. Actually, I had a basketball game that night. So, I get tired of hearing accusations and slander and all this. I, I agree, and we need to move on. I'm, I'm tired of hearing what somebody said about this, and what somebody said about that, and we're going back and forth and back and forth, like the commissioner said. Man, we can't even move on with the business. I'm sitting here just looking at the time and seeing how long we're going to sit here and argue about something just that, that we shouldn't even be, continue to bring up. It might be good press, but hey, we've got other things we need to deal with, we've got other issues we need to deal with, and, and like I said, let's move on. Let bygones be bygones. I went to church last night, actually, and you know what the lady told us? She said, "Let it go." And that's, that's what I want to tell both of y'all, let's let it go, let's move on. I, I get tired of, like I said, I get tired of hearing it also. Let's let it go, and let's move on to the next issue that we need to be dealing with, and let's let the personal attacks, we, we need to stop it. We need to stop calling, you know, attacking each other. And this ain't what it's, this ain't what the people elected before to get up here and attack, attack staff or attack one of those. This is not why we hired the attorney to attack. So let's move on with the issue. That, that, that issue is, is over with, we done dealt with it, let's move forward to the next issue.
All right, here's some of your motion. Further board discussion?
I, I do, I have discussion. And, and this is, this is what is said when, when I have my say, it's cut off, and this is something we shouldn't be discussing. But I, I sat here for 40 to 45 minutes at the last meeting while Jeremy Novak and Michael Hammond had their say without interruption, and this has happened repeatedly while I've been on this board. Michael Hammond has sat here, and, and before you were on the board, Commissioner Quinn, this has happened, and he is given the floor to say everything that he wants in an attack on me. And it's only when I speak that certain commissioners decide that, that that's too much, and it's time to cut it. Now, I am an elected official, and I'm an attorney in this community, and our county attorney has made very serious accusations against me at a public meeting, and that is something that I feel compelled to clear up. So now we have a motion on the floor to, and I'm, I'm having my discussion, Commissioner McLemore, I have the floor. So now we have a motion to shut down my discussion and a second, and you're telling me that, that this party is something that you were not invited to by Waste Pro? I understand that, I accept that, but the people in the community are asking me, why are, why are the contractors that the county does business with paying for a party of 400 to 500 men, $15,000 to $20,000, that only people can come, that our assistant county attorney made, our assistant county administrator? Let me finish my sentence, and I will shut up. Our assistant county administrator has stated that you can only attend that party if you are invited by Mr. Norton or Mr. Rish. Why are our county contractors paying that kind of money for a party that you can only be invited to by Mr. Norton or Mr. Rish? And it's this big honor, as Michael Hammond has said. That's what people are asking. You know what, I don't care, I don't want to go to your men's party, but the people in the community care.
I don't hate that.
And it is the county business, they're paying for it. The people out there are paying for it.
Commissioner, need to vote on this. We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Bryan, I have none. Anyone in the audience? Not any opposition to...
I'm opposed. I'm opposed to you shutting down my discussion.
Point was called, if you'll check Robert's rules. Motion passed four to one. He'll have the floor, Commissioner.
I, I'm done.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, just a couple of things.
Sure.
I know that the community probably has been seeing the Auburn kids in the community. I just want to tell those guys, and whoever's running that program, thank you for all the hard work that those kids do, do every spring break and every summer when they come in. So we really appreciate all the work that they do for the community of Port St. Joe. And a huge thank you to our staff for assisting with the equipment, and a huge, a huge thank you to the city officials and also the city staff for stepping up and getting these guys what they need to get the job done in the community. Every time they come in, they are truly a blessing. They not only clean up in the community, but they also try to help encourage the people that's in the community. So thank you to those individuals that who run, who run that program, and thank you to the, to the Auburn students also. My next thing I have...
Commissioner Quinn, let me say that. Any of you, if you haven't, go over and see what these young people do. We've got fine young people this day and time. A lot of times they get bash and, well, the kids here, no, we've got fine young people. I've been over there and, and saw what they do, year after year after year, and this, South County is very fortunate, City of Port St. Joe is very fortunate to have these young people come in. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Next, my next thing I have, I have a letter here, and I, I'll pass it out to you all. It's just a letter from me showing my support to the, the North Port St. Joe, North Port St. Joe Project Area Committee, just a letter from, from me to showing that I, that I support what they are trying to do to the, the Jesse Duball, Dupont Fund. And I had a chance to meet with the mayor, and the mayor's on board, what, what they are trying to accomplish. So I just got a copy of the letter, I just want to pass out to you all, so you can see where I'm supporting them.
Say it, too.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Turn now to Commissioner McLemore. Commissioner McLemore, do you have anything for the board?
I do have a couple of items I need to discuss. We've recently, and you received one too, a $50,000 grant for the Honeyville Park and the Dead Lakes Park. I have a little issue with mine, Mr. Butler, and what I wanted to look at, the way those grants are written, when you write a grant, you, you put like maybe $10,000 in here for a batting cage, or $20,000 for a dugout, or whatever it may be. Our grant in Honeyville, the way it was written, we can only spend $10,000 for a batting cage, which is fine, but the book of it, which is $40,000, the way the grant was written, it, it says we must build another field, ball field. Okay. The problem we have there, we don't have the room up there to build another ball field. We have measured it and, and squared it awfully, calling it worth of air. We don't have it. So my question, Mr. Butler, can we, can we reach back out to DEP with this grant and try to modify it a little bit where we can use the money?
Yes, we don't in the past.
Hey, do I need the motion, Mr. Attorney, on that? Do I need the board approval? Motion to reach back out to DEP.
All right. Motion by Commissioner McLemore. Second over by Commissioner Barnes. Right, any further board discussion?
Commissioner McLemore, are you going to give some direction on what we're going to tell DEP we're going to do?
Yes, I'll give, we'll give after, after the board leaves.
All right, anyone in the audience, any opposition to Mr. Ma, Commissioner McLemore's motion? If not, motion passed five and oh.
Good. I have one other item, I want to make it official. I will not seek reelection. When my term is up, I think it comes up in November, I'll be gone. I just, I want the public to know that.
That all you want? That's it. All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Butler, also with Dead Lakes Campground, and I'm, I'm going to address some of that, we'll look there if, if some of it is bound to where it possibly... Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll be very brief, in the sake of time, we have a couple items here. This is informational, up at Dead Lakes Campground, the campers, we're having to turn campers away, having to turn campers away for lack of space. It's really, it's catching on. I have not went, the TDC director, she approached me here probably a year ago or so, I said, "We can't go advertise this until we get more spaces available." And I'm, this is just information for the board. We're looking at opening up nine more campsites up there at this park to accommodate. We turned away five this past weekend. We had a, I don't know how many Boy Scouts from Dothan, Alabama, in that area down visiting that park this weekend. There'll be churches up there with Easter egg hunts going on, people will come in. We'll be packed out again this weekend, we're having to turn them. So anyway, I just want to let the board know, there will not be money out of your pocket. This park pays its own way. Money we collect from the campers goes back into the park, so best assured, we won't be dipping into your pockets, we'll be using the campers' money. And that's all I have, just bringing it to the people and to the board. All right, ladies and gentlemen, and going to move to item number six, trying to move, we have a public hearing proposed a five-year capital improvement. I think you have it in front of you. I've looked it over. If you have a chance, look it over. Not written in stone, but it gives you an idea. Hold on just a minute. Alex, I know you've got to go to a meeting with Representative, United States Representative, Gwen Graham's office, Alex Quintana, he will be at the fire station from when to when?
Eleven to one, sir.
Eleven to one. Any of you have any questions concerning, with Representative Graham, stop by and say that. Alex, thank you for coming. Always great to see you.
Commissioner's good to see you.
Thank you, sir. Going to address this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I, I just asked you to go ahead and call the public hearing.
All right. We're going to open up for public, anyone in the public, anyone in the public have any, probably haven't even seen it, but it's out there. On this five-year, it's a five-year capital improvement, it's a review. Anyone in engineering or anyone concerned, have any questions on it? Mr. Lowry, do you have any, anything you'd like to shed on it?
One thing, this is just an annual review of our capital improvement schedule to be updated. It's, it's required by state statute to be updated yearly. The main portion is grants and roads and bond information to be updated annually, and that is what has been done here. You have to have two public hearings, one being today, and then one being next month, and it will be adopted by ordinance. So if you've got any questions or concerns, public has any questions or concerns, it is in the clerk's office, so.
Fine. I was just looking here, just briefly, here for the, the fiscal year, Beacon Hill Park, Phase Three, it's right here, $588,000, Saw Street Boat Ramp, current $152,000 and $50,000 for Honeyville and Dead Lakes Park. It's right here, and it's spread out over five years, what we'll do. All right, thank you, sir. Anything else?
That's all on that.
Right. Just move now. Ladies and gentlemen, item number seven, we only have 10.
Can I say something?
Yes.
You skipped number five, the county tax certificate.
Motion. I did?
Yep.
Thank you, thank you. County held tax certificates, let's drop back to five. I didn't buy any tax, I pay mine, so I don't know where, give us a report or whatever we need to know.
There's a list of county held tax certificates that was provided.
Do we have that?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, the clerk is not here today because she's celebrating the birth of her granddaughter, so...
Well, that's great, that's great.
Mr. Attorney, what kind of action we need to take on this?
My understanding is the tax certificates by statute are going to expire if we don't pursue them on the tax deed sales. In the past, historically, if I recall, that the county has instructed Ms. Jenkins to either pursue them or not pursue them. I don't have the list, but if Ms. Woodward, is Ms. Norris looking for us to suspend pursuing the tax deed sales of these, so that Ms. Jenkins has authority not to commence with them?
Sir, I apologize, I did not speak with Ms. Norris this morning regarding this issue, so I'll table it until...
Motion to table it, that Ms. Norris gets here and addresses it.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. We've got a motion, got a second, any other board discussion on tabling this, and we can get the facts and court information. Anyone in the audience, the opposition, motion passed five and oh to table. County?
I'm sorry, you said...
Yeah, Commissioner. Lowry, I think we're back over to you, sir.
Yes, sir. You've got a public notice in front of you, it's regarding our planning development review board yesterday and today at the public hearing, final public hearing on one variance and quasi-judicial hearing. Your memorandum in front of you, I'll, I'll read that, dated today. Please see below, recommendations from our planning development review board regarding March 21st, 2016 meeting, a variance request for Tamela Elmore, ARSA ID 04361-000R, Section 26, Township Seven, South Range 11 West, corner of Parker Avenue and Bonita Street in Highland View. They're requesting a nine-foot variance into the 20-foot roadside building setback. The planning development review board recommendation to the board, Board of County Commissioners, by 4-0 vote, under Section 34, Provision 1 and 4, to approve the request of up to nine-foot variance or encroachment into the 20-foot roadside setback off of Bonita Street as listed in the application, site plan, and survey that's in front of you right now.
Somebody's to move forward with it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we, one, one thing, we need to go through the quasi-judicial...
Sure, I am. Is anyone in the audience... Is anyone in the audience, uh, have any, uh, opposition or any concerns or any questions about this, uh, variance? The gentleman stated, uh, it's in, um, Highland View, it's a four-foot setback, am I correct there? Or nine-foot into a twenty-foot roadside setback, nine-foot into twenty. Anyone, anyone here to avoid having to go through a quasi?
Right, just ask, just make sure you're asking about quasi judicial.
Wave that. Now, let's come over here.
I'll make the motion to waive the quasi judicial.
Okay, got a motion to waive. Need a second, second by Commissioner Macklemore. Any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience opposed to waiving? Not, no opposition, motion passed five and oh. Now, got a motion?
Motion to approve the PDRB's recommendation by four vote.
Need a second.
I'll second.
Second over here by Commissioner Ryan. Any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Opposition? This motion passed five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's it? Thank you, sir. Uh, who? Mr. Katrina, are you still with us? Please come up and, you know. I restore people, they're still here. Okay.
Good morning.
Katrina, you have a flow.
Thank you. I'm Katrina Saunders, representing the Weaver Hitchcock Medical Center, one of the federally qualified healthcare centers for Gulf County. Um, I just want to give our quarterly update. Our provider, Destiny Barnes, has asked that, um, I relay her passion about preventive care and asks that everyone in the community make sure that you're contacting your primary care providers to schedule your annual physicals and to talk about health screenings. This month, March, is colorectal cancer awareness month. Among cancers that affect both men and women, it is the second leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and it is highly preventable. So we ask that you talk with your primary care providers beginning at the age of fifty and get screened. Our company, North Florida Medical Centers, along with Weaver Hitchcock Medical Center, is in year two of a grant with Walgreens and the American Cancer Society. This grant has enabled us to increase our rate for our patients of colorectal cancer screenings from twelve percent to fifty percent. And I will say that across North Florida with our, uh, twelve centers, we have identified several people who had, um, colorectal cancer and did not know it. But, um, the grant gives people who don't have insurance access to colorectal cancer screenings, and if they come up with a positive screening, then we work to help them find a provider who will do a colonoscopy. Um, as a final reminder, we continue to accept new patients and have same-day appointments available, and we do have the slide fee program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the service that you provide for the people, not only in Gulf County but the surrounding area.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a safe trip. I'll have you, sir. Item number nine, before we go into public discussion. Uh, Restore, all the year, please come on up. Sir, are you going to come up or is she going to make the presentation? All right, there you go. Good morning again.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chairman.
All right, I see, uh, Mr. Jaeger, he's getting up a little closer, and that way we won't have a problem.
Yes, sir. Um, I guess I'll go ahead and kick things off for us. I'll give you a little recap of why we're here today. Uh, Ms. Lanier has also got a presentation that I will, uh, have her put up on the screen for you as well. So before, while she's doing that, I'll just give you a little recap of why we're here today. Um, if you'll recall, the Restore Act required the counties, disproportionately affected counties, to create what's called a multi-year implementation plan. So the, the board hired Duberry to, uh, create that plan. It's called a multi-year implementation plan because there will be, uh, different phases, there are different sets of funding, there's a transocean settlement, which is currently in your coffers, there's also the Anadarko, which we'll mention a little bit later, and then there's also the BP, which is still in signing procedures. So, excuse me, your Restore Advisory Committee last week on March fifteenth did approve a set of project priorities to be included in the first phase of the multi-year plan, and what we have before you tonight, or sorry, this morning, is, um, what those project priorities would include. We, Stella Wilson, what, Duberry? Do you have a, um, thing here, or do you want me to just look back at you and you can click forward, or?
You can.
You'll just tell me to forward, I'll forward.
Forward one right now, thank you.
Ready to go with it?
Yes, sir.
I got you, I'm good, I'm.
So in the first step of the multi-year implementation plan, Duberry along with the county staff conducted a community needs assessment. What we did, uh, from that point was develop a set of selection criteria by which projects would be scored and ranked, and then the third step in that process was to accept, uh, project submittals and project proposals from qualified applicants. This is just a report of, uh, during that phase, some of the metrics. We opened the online portal on October nineteenth, and it was closed on November thirtieth. We had twenty registrations and we had thirty-two applications. I'm happy to say that all thirty-two applications that were submitted were complete, so we didn't have to disqualify any of those. There was a total request of, uh, a total of twenty-three million dollars, a little This just classifies the different proposals into the eligible activity categories, and these eligible activities are in line with the Restore Act. So you can see that the majority of applications were, um, for the promotion of tourism or infrastructure projects benefiting the economy or ecological resources. Just a reminder of what the adopted scoring criteria looks like, uh, I believe that the RAC recommended this, and then the board did approve this scoring criteria, so this is what Duberry's subject matter expert team used to score the, all of the projects that were submitted. And then the total available points were a hundred and eighteen with the bonus of leveraging. Okay? This, uh, section right here just kind of summarizes the different projects that were submitted. It, um, the left column, the name of the project as it was submitted, the second column, or sorry, the third column is the request, uh, for the amount of funding through Restore, and then the phase one only was what could be accomplished in one year only. And then some of the, uh, proposers did bring a match to the project as well, and that is represented in that fifth column there. The match ratio is simply the, you know, the ratio of match brought versus the request, and then the total budget are the match plus the Restore request. Uh, you can see, again, like I said, the total request was a little over twenty-three million dollars, but there was a match total brought of fifty million dollars. So all in all, the projects total that were submitted cost around seventy-three million These are the raw technical scores. I did post all this online on the GulfCountyRestore.com website, so you can have access to all of the project files and all of the raw scores that are on there, but I just wanted to, uh, provide this in the presentation so you had, um, access to it as well. Once the raw scores were determined, we had to consider additional factors. That, uh, there were several things that happened during the course of developing the multi-implementation plan. Um, obviously, the settlement amount was, uh, slightly different than was originally anticipated. That we've also received some clarification from Treasury, who actually administers this grant program, on what some of the eligible components of the projects would look like. Uh, some of the projects that we received, we did have discussions with Treasury on, on certain elements to ask them if they would consider those as eligible components or not, and, um, I will say that some of the answers we got were very direct, other answers were not so direct, there were more or less, we don't know yet. So you'll see in just a minute that we had to put some of the projects into that category of we don't know yet if it'll be eligible. Another factor that was considered was definitely the timing of projects and the implement, implementability, that's a word. Um, basically, can it be implemented within the first year? Uh, remember that this is for first-year projects only, only for the transocean settlement and for the Anadarko settlement. So they would have to fit, at least start construction within that first year. Actually, it would be, it would be five years, but the timing was a big factor compared to other projects that could start later. And then obviously the complexity, I just mentioned that we've had these discussions with Treasury, so they've had some comments on complexity of projects as well. So we, more or less, we categorize the projects into certain, um, I guess buckets, if you will, probably not a good term since it's been used before, but, um, different, let's see, the ineligible projects, I'll go through these quickly. And again, these are all the projects that were taken from the portal, which were submitted, uh, earlier this year. It was five projects total that were determined to be ineligible, um, for various reasons. I'm not going to go into every single one of them. Um, we have discussed these at the, uh, Restore Advisory Committee meeting, and, um, obviously, anybody who actually submitted these projects can feel free to call me and I can go over them in detail. Uh, but more or less, it was either something to do with public interest or private property or, uh, didn't identify exactly what the funding would go to. Treasury's really big on every single dollar has to be specifically, what they call specifically allocable, so some of the projects didn't quite identify what the money would go to. This classification, this set of projects, is in the second classification. These are projects that are not necessarily ineligible, but they may have a component of them that could make them ineligible. Um, these would be, or that they, or we also had put projects in this, uh, class, in this category that would possibly fit much, much better in a different pot for Restore. Uh, the final rankings, these are the final recommendations that came out of the Restore Advisory Committee meeting last week on the fifteenth. So for your year-one priority projects, Duberry along with the Restore Advisory Committee are recommending the slate of projects that you see under your year-one here, so that's the, the first four rows. So the Gulf County Stormwater Management Plan, Phase One, um, again, I won't, I won't read all of them, but under that set is another subset of projects that were also prioritized as high, but not as high as the year-one priority projects, and those start with the Core Park, Beacon Hill Sewer, St. Joeport, and go down. Um, your, excuse me, your, uh, text in blue there is just to, is just mirroring the other one, just to reflect that, that has multiple benefits of public access and economic development and tourism. So again, this is just a breakdown of the year-one priority projects that are being recommended. The, uh, associated funding amounts of those are off to the right. And again, a breakdown of the years two through five recommended projects. Uh, just to clarify, again, your, your multi-year implementation plan, Phase One, will only include year-one projects. You are allowed to discuss subsequent year projects, but Treasury will not approve any projects beyond year one. And then there was another subset of projects that did not rank as ineligible or considered for another pot, but they didn't rank as high as the projects in years one through I just wanted to give you a quick breakdown of what your year-one funding looked like. Uh, just a reminder, the transocean settlement amount was for two million eight hundred eighty-nine thousand approximately. We did find out just this month that Anadarko, um, had a, a little bit higher of a, a liability percentage, I believe is what they're calling it. And then in the first quarter of two thousand sixteen, which should be at the end of March, you should receive an additional four hundred and fifty thousand in your pot one funds to accompany, uh, your year-one projects. So we did go ahead and factor that in and assume that you all will, will receive the four hundred and fifty thousand this year as well. Uh, that gives you a subtotal of, uh, around three point three million. The county did apply for and receive approval from Treasury for a planning assistance grant to more or less create the whole multi-year implementation plan development process that we're going through now, and, um, that was around five hundred and sixty thousand, so your total is two point seven seven eight million. Okay? Uh, this is just a, a little bit more broken down of the funding requests for each project in year one. It just gives you more of a breakdown of how the project administration, the project management, and then the contingency fund for construction projects would be, um, requested in the multi-year plan. At your next, the next time that I come before you for Restore, you will see a multi-year implementation plan draft, and that's actually what will be going to Treasury. If you choose to approve this today, these recommendations will go into that draft. We will bring that draft to the public for forty-five days as required by Treasury and the Restore Act, and it'll bring that draft back to you. That will actually have detailed descriptions of the projects, detailed breakdown of funding and that plan. Um, so next steps, again, will be, the next step will be to draft the multi-year implementation plan. Uh, forty-five day public comment period is required. We will post it on the website. We will, excuse me, accept, uh, public comments via email, written comments, verbal comments via telephone. We will have a public meeting on May third, uh, Restore Advisory Committee meeting, where we, we will accept comments on the draft at that meeting as well. And then on, I believe I have the date wrong, I think you all are meeting on June twenty-eighth in June. Whether it's June fourteenth or June twenty-eighth, at your June meeting, we will be back to present that plan to you, the full plan. And then once you approve the plan, it will be submitted to Treasury, which is obviously the ultimate goal of this process, and Treasury has approximately three months, um, to approve your multi-year implementation plan. Once the plan is approved, then you can begin crafting individual grant applications for the projects, which we expect that to take anywhere from six to nine months, just based on how long the grant applications take right now with Treasury. So we expect rough estimate for dollars to actually be flowing for projects in or around April first of two thousand seventeen, so approximately a year from now still. Okay? I'm happy to take any questions, um, but I think we are looking for a motion, I believe. Is that right, Warren?
Let me just add something, Stella.
Sure.
Come on, Warren. Briefly, just wanted to add, Mr. Chairman and, and board members, uh, I certainly appreciate the commitment of time that the committee, your, your Restore Committee put into this process. This has been a long process, and even, even in the last drafting of this, there were some changes made by that committee and, and was submitted to that, so I just wanted to say that we appreciate the, the commitment that these, these folks ma, made through this process. I also want to say is, this is your draft plan. This is, this is, the, the Restore Act was written, written, and we, we, uh, pushed for this, that at the end of the day, the Board of County Commissioners were, were the ones that were deciding on what, what projects go into their plan. So this is your plan, and if you prove it today as submitted, we'll certainly go on with the process of the forty-five days and then the writing of the, of the initial plan that'll go to Treasury. But we appreciate, uh, we appreciate all the committee members, and I wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
May I?
Yes, we recognize, Commissioner.
Mr. Jaeger, you are requesting a vote on this today?
Yes, sir, if we can, if we can get a vote on this. Now, you'll still have to vote on the final product, but this is what will go into the final product for, for, so we do need a vote of, of affirmation today.
Move it forward. All right, some move.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore.
Go move.
Second by Commissioner Barnes. Any other board members, any discussion? All right, anyone in the audience, any discussion, any concerns? Yes, sir, this gentleman right here, sir. Uh, Warren, are you through?
Yes, sir.
Oh, God, I didn't want, okay. Want to get everything out of, come on up, young man, come on up. Uh, please state your name over here.
Yes, I will, sir.
Right over here.
Noel Gardy, uh, three eleven Bonnet Street.
So good to have you back.
Thanks, Ward.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner McDaniel, did I notice that there was, uh, a, a fair amount of money in year one for acquisition of lands?
Yes.
And is there any, do we know what the land is to be acquir, what land is going to be acquired, question one? Question two is?
Okay, hold, hold that right there, and that's answer one, then we'll go to, freeze this time, Mr. Jaeger. He's right here with you, let him join you, please.
One of the things that the board members were concerned, well, there was two, two concerns. Number one was stormwater, uh, for the county and getting a plan for a stormwater that the public works can use, and another was acquisitions to strategic, uh, lands, whether it be for economic development or whether it be for beach restoration project that we need some property of, or whether it be for public access to our bays and our rivers and estuaries. So those three things were mentioned. So we felt it necessary for us to put some, some dollars in there for, for land acquisitions for ones that come up. We, I know we missed one, and Ms. Hardman would tell, tell you that we lost out, not only on the, on the property, but we lost out on about half a million dollars worth of funding from DEP that we could have gotten. And so that was basically what it was put in there for the land acquisition, so the opportunities.
Just hang close there. Okay, Noel, you say?
The question that?
All right, uh, Mr. Robert, all right.
My follow-up question was, I'm assuming that this land is to be acquired from private landowners. Is that a correct assumption?
Uh, I think that's a correct, um, assumption.
Okay.
It's just wherever one becomes a.
Just wherever one becomes available, that would be strategically accounted for.
And, and what process do we have, will be in place to assure that those prices that the county pays are fair? So we get the most bang for our buck on those land acquisitions? I know the money's a win for it, but we shouldn't just spend it...
There'll have to be an appraisal process. And so once that appraisal process is done, then you, you can negotiate with the property owner. And that's why we didn't specifically specify any one property. It's because you don't never know if you've got a willing seller or, or a willing seller at the appraised value. So there'll be an appraisal process, it'll all be open to the public, and, and that's where it'll be.
That answers question three. Question four was, will, will the property acquisitions be voted on by the Board at these meetings as they occur?
Absolutely, they will. The Board will approve that. And we'll probably have to amend the MYIP going forward if we find a specific project. It's not a long process, but that's another reason we put land acquisitions in there. If we hadn't have put land acquisitions in there, then we'd have to gone out for public comment again for another 45 days and would have, you know, hindered getting the projects.
Well, thanks for answering my questions, thank you, Chairman McDaniel.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, good to have you back. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Anyone else in the audience? No, no one else in the audience, all right? Is any opposition to the Commissioner McLemore's motion? Any opposition? If not, motion, pass five and O to approve and to speed forward. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, now, Mr. Butler, are we on target? Target. We're open to the public. Anyone in the public that has anything before the Board, this is your turn. All right, sir, we'll yield to the lady up here, Noel, and I'll get back with you. Pat, come on. You know the procedure.
Pat Hardman, President Coastal Community Association.
You're representing the CCA?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have a floor.
Got good, good news. The Easter Bunny came to Sheriff Mike and said he needed some help. And to our kids in our community that are less affluent and need some help, we're getting a basket. So the sheriff called on Coastal Community Association, St. Joe Bay Golf Club, and the South Gulf County Volunteer Fire Department to bring some other Easter Munnies out to try to get some baskets. And I would like to report to you that we have enough baskets to take care of everybody in the county that needs one. So the Easter Munnies are going to turn them all over to Sheriff this afternoon, and the sheriff's office is going to get them out to everybody that needs them. This is such a positive thing for our children in our community to see these offices and see the Sheriff's Department participate in this way. So we just want to say thank you for the sheriff filling in to be an Easter Bunny. I couldn't convince him to wear the bunny outfit today, he had to dress up for somebody's...
Well, that's what I was going to ask you, could you maybe, okay. That humor, that's all.
The second thing I'd like to kind of report for you is, we had asked at Coastal Community Association meeting in January if Halsey Bishers, Representative Bishers, would get us an appointment with the Secretary of DOT to see if he would help us out with our beach restoration. Now, he, he isn't interested in sand, he's interested in the road. Halsey got that meeting in his office for us, and Butler and Commissioner Barnes joined me. And we had a nice meeting with him. He brought not only himself, but those four top guys in there. And I think we shocked him a little bit because he brought out the fact that there's a $60 million bridge on the table. When the thing breaks through, it'll take about five to seven years to get the bridge in. We shocked him when we said, "We don't want you to build a bridge, we want you to protect the bay. We want you to stop the breakthrough, we want you to bring sand and abutment in there to take care of that." I understand it did go into the budget. I have no idea what he'll do, but that's two more million dollars towards that effort in some way, shape, or form. So I, I felt very positive, and I want to make sure Halsey Bishers gets lion's share, 100% of the, of the recognition for having done that for us.
I hadn't seen the governor's final.
He hadn't, he hadn't, he hadn't, it wasn't on his cut list, let me put it that way.
Let's hope it stays on.
Hope it stays. Third thing, real quick, is on the same thing, on Save the Cape. We're having a, a kind of get together tonight, an SOS party at the Haughty Heron from 6:00 to 8:00. Going to have some live music, going to have some refreshments. We're asking everybody in the county to come down and support Save the Cape, Save the Bay, Save the County. And like all of y'all to show up, and anybody out there in the community, come on down and, and join us and, and support us. That's it. Three good things.
There you go, Pat, we need some good things. Thank you. I have a couple, okay. Yes, okay, young lady, come on, come on, come on, come on.
Jill Peyton, 311 Bonnet. Yes, and I have about three things I want to discuss.
Sure, go ahead, Jill, you have the floor.
The first is, I have, I watched the, the meeting and the discussion around Waste Pro at the last regular meeting. I did not finish the video from March 10th. Was there any actionable item that came out of that meeting with Waste Pro? In terms of renegotiating the contract or looking at the services that we got? Okay. I, being a Monday morning armchair quarterback, you know, once the contract is in place, but we have a vendor who has been noticed as being in breach of contract. We have items in their service that are not meeting the needs of our, our community. We do not have the bulk pickup, we don't have any type of recycling, and we don't have a regular schedule or any vehicle that I'm aware of to get rid of waste, waste from the yards. I will tell you that my husband and I came back from dinner last night, and there was a fire in our neighborhood. A very significant fire in Beacon Hill. We had a resident neighbor who was burning his yard trash. I don't, I cannot say that this is a, you know, was a cause, but definitely not having a way to get rid of yard trash contributes to this. It was frightening. My request is that you reconsider any actions that we can take to revisit what we have, what we're going to be living with, with Waste Pro for the next five or 10 or 11 years or whatever that time period is. I'm done with that one. The next is just with regards to the meeting schedule. Again, I'm going back on old business, which was mentioned at the meeting on February 29th. From a public perspective, I would very much like to see our regular meetings go back to twice a month. I believe there's too much business that gets crammed into a once a month public meeting. There are items that the Board has not had a chance to see, they're often presented at the last minute. And I, I think having a once a month meeting contributes to that. From a, from a public appearance perception perspective, I, I feel like we, the public are not being heard and we don't have an opportunity to hear like we used to. I think a, a meeting and an afternoon meeting gets, allows a lot of different people to participate in the process. So another thing I would ask that the Board reconsiders is the meeting schedules. Was that clear? Okay.
Thank you.
And I have one more comment, and I hate, am I still have time? I feel like I have to say that from a public scrutiny perspective, I know the Board doesn't want to speak of it anymore, but the meetings with our county leadership and our vendors and a men's night and all that is very dis... It's just disturbing and it's just inappropriate on many levels.
Hold on, just a moment, you're out of time.
That's all I have.
Okay, all right, thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? All right. No, sir, please come up and I'll get your name for these minutes.
My name is Edgar Tied, I got a place on Selma Street right over there in. There's no turnaround there, and it's nothing but a mud hole. I've talked to Ms. Joanne Bryant about it, she hadn't gotten back with me. Somebody's turned around and broke the septic cover. And they've also broke the water, water meter on my end of it. And it cost me some $500 water bill. So if y'all would look at that, see about upgrading it and putting a turnaround there would be great.
Mark, would you, sir, look and see if that, you know, first, you know, it's a county property, we have to do that. And if it is, what, what you got to work with, okay?
Road, the road ends right in front of my place.
But people's encroached over on your property, is what it says.
Everybody comes there and turns around, garbage trucks, whatever, you know? If you go down and look, it's nothing but a mud hole.
Didn't know, I know now.
And, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Cochrane and I have discussed that end of the road. And several roads end out there in that area. And we certainly will get back out there, yes. And we have gotten, we've had some rain, so it's just something that will be an ongoing maintenance issue until we can afford to take action like many other roads in the county.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for coming, sir. I think we had a couple of more over here. Okay, Noel. Is anyone else over here that, we got another gentleman back here, what about over in here? We have anyone in here, I don't want to miss anyone. Okay. All right, Noel, you, oh, you got to go through the process.
No problem. Noel Gardy, 311 Bonnet Street.
All right, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, we had our second fire in a couple of years in a four-block area of Beacon Hill. And it's, it is, it is very, very unsettling. I don't know if it's the, the conditions, but that's probably a big contributor. We have a lot of yard waste that people are disposing of in empty lots and disposing of as they will. I was one of the few neighbors who was handy with, was there with a garden hose, fighting the fire till the two fire trucks came. And it was extremely scary, it was hot, the trees were caught, the trees caught fire. This gentleman started a, a trash fire in a metal container, left it unattended, and came back. We came back from our trip to Mexico Beach to find a, a big column of black smoke you could see from three miles away on Highway 98. It's close to our house, but this is the second fire we've had within, I said, in a four-block area of Bonnet Street. The other condition I'm wondering about is, do we allow people to, unpermitted burning in the yards? And shouldn't that be revisited? It seems like if we're not going to have the trash pickup, the refu, the, the yard waste pickup we, we, we used to have, maybe we need to be more vigilant about allowing people to burn stuff, you know, willy-nilly in their, in their yards, which were often, again, under a canopy of pine trees or, and yesterday, it was a perfect day to start a fire, dry and windy. So this gentleman lost, it, it started in outbuildings, and it, it consumed those, and then it spread and got a good portion of the man's home. I think he's lost his home from the fire damage and the water damage, roof is all burned up. And that house was a mess, I've got to say that. I don't want to be critical of my neighbors, but a lot of the conditions on a lot of the property, if you just looked at it, and you'd just say, I don't know why they're storing a stack of truck pallets next, in, in the yard, but people do those kind of things here. And maybe, maybe we should, someone should look at those conditions and where they're not safe. It's a place where the county could intervene under its fire regulations more than, than it seems to be right now. People just go ahead and burn what they want. We've got, we've got, uh, uh, people incinerating yard waste, and it, it's kind of a scary situation, especially in this kind of weather, thank you.
Hey, Noel, thank you, sir. You have this young man back here, come on.
Thomas Bush, 105 Chapel Lane, Port St. Joe.
Oh, hey.
I just wanted to support Dr. Hardman and her group. They, I've been coming to this county since I was a little boy and out on the Cape camping at St. Joe. I can't imagine anybody voting no. I live in Over Street, but sometimes me and my wife will go to Cape Salinas, or we'll go to the Cape, to the beach. And it's a beautiful place, but I just cannot imagine anybody voting no not to re-nourish that beach. It does, it, to me, it looks terrible out there now. And I know everybody, most everybody supports it. I just hope everybody votes for it because it affects everybody in the entire county. And we need that beach re-nourished.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. All right, I don't, I don't see anyone else. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience, thank you for your time. Most on the floor to adjourn. Second. Remove. Meeting adjourned.